Good evening, everybody. It is May fourteenth, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. I call this meeting of the Moraga Town Council to order on a wonderful day in Moraga. Roll call. Let the record show that all town council members are present. Pledge of allegiance. Sally, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure.
All you have to do is say, "I pledge."
I pledge. I think I know the words. Oh, you want me to... Oh, wow, this is official.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sally, thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to item number three, which is presentations. And we have the opportunity and privilege tonight to have a presentation from the Contra Costa County Library Commission. Would you come on up and make sure the microphone is on?
Testing, hello?
Hi.
All right. Thank you, first of all, to the town council for giving me the opportunity to present on county library funding today. And also thank you especially to Amy, who was critical in putting everything together and helping make the technology work. And not the least of which I want to call out also that I have some supporters here from Friends of the Moraga Library cheering me on. So it feels good to be in front of you here tonight. My name is Amanda Kung. I am the Moraga Commissioner for the Contra Costa County Library Commission. And by way of introduction on what the commission is, it is an advisory group that basically serves to advise the board of supervisors and a county librarian on issues pertaining to the local libraries that are part of our Contra Costa County library system. There are 24 voting members, of which Moraga is one. And in the past year and year and a half or so that I've been part of the commission, I've really kind of boiled down what the role is to those bullets right here, which is that I'm there to represent Moraga's interests at the county level. I aim to bring back ideas and opportunities that I hear from other libraries and their commissioners on what's happening there. And also to keep key stakeholders such as the town council, as well as the Friends of the Moraga Library, informed about what's happening at the county level, what discussions are being had, and how we can be part and party to those discussions. So the goal of me standing in front of you here tonight is really to do three things. To spotlight Moraga library's role in our community. It's to also talk about the goal to expand hours and the impact that our libraries have. And also, lastly, to discuss the need to increase funding for the Contra Costa County libraries. So we'll start with what is offered at the Moraga library. There's a ton offered. It's hard to boil it down to a few items. But, you know, you get to find and borrow books for free. You have the opportunity to use computers. I know that my younger son used a computer for the first time there and learned how to use a mouse on the children's stations. It's a safe space, you know, for people to go get homework help. And there's a tremendous amount of support and community outreach offered by our libraries through arts and cultural programming. I do want to highlight, there's a map that's hard to see on the right-hand side, that Moraga has the second highest percentage of households actively using the library, behind Arinda. And so it is a tremendous amount of interaction that's happening at the library, a lot of community engagement and involvement. And we'd love to see that continue. So for our relatively small library in the county, we have a pretty massive footprint in terms of usage and utilization. A little spotlight for Friends of the Moraga Library, because this is such a critical part of why our libraries are doing so well despite having so little funding. Our Friends are a fantastic group of dedicated individuals. There's a board that manages funds, as well as puts on activities like the semi-annual community book sale. If you've ever gone to it, it's a fantastic bargain. I think I got eight paperback kids' books for my kids for $2. There's also, you know, a lot of significant funding that the library, or the Friends of the Moraga library provide, such as the refresh of our library interiors just last year, as well as new book purchases. So one of the big things for this year is the Friends of the Moraga library gave $25,000 to Moraga Library to purchase new materials that will be housed at our library, but circulated amongst the county. And also year-round community and cultural events and programs. So whenever they have activities like Learn About Bats, that's put on by funds from Friends of the Moraga library. There's other programs based on holidays that are coming up. And so lots of that is funded by the Friends. And the Friends, for most of the county libraries, are a critical resource to helping maintain some of these programs on an ongoing basis. But, I guess here's the but. The Friends, while they can do so much and are doing so much, right? I think what we would love to have is a dedicated source of funding for the Contra Costa County libraries. Recently, there was an article that came out in the East Bay Times that basically headline was, you know, "Contra Costa County libraries are the lowest funded in the Bay Area. Why are they so successful?" And the article goes into basically all the work that our county does and our librarians do and our Friends groups... Well, it doesn't go into that, but our Friends groups do to really maintain the wonderful programming that is occurring at the library and the outreaches to the community. But they're doing a lot with very little. And so one of the fun stories I have of this one is somebody sent me this article, and I clicked into it. I hit a paywall, because I don't subscribe to the East Bay Times. And then I thought, well, how do I read the article? And then I remembered that through the library, I actually have access to the East Bay Times using my library card. So that's how I got access to the full article and back issue. And so, you know, a little bit of basics is just what are our current library hours? I talked about wanting to expand hours. Right now, we're open Tuesday through Saturday for a total of 40 hours in the week. It's eight hours a day with just hours varying by day. I think most notably here is that we're closed on Mondays, but we're also closed on Sundays. Sundays, as many of you probably are aware, has been a big issue, particularly for La Mirinda, wanting to open up on Sundays, you know, be available to the community on a pretty critical day of the week, when we feel like many families could actually be taking advantage of library resources. Currently, there are no Contra Costa County libraries open on Sundays, with the exception of Concord, which is running a pilot program on self-service. And so that's, they're open for four hours on Sundays, and you have to go through a full orientation and get kind of pre-screened in order to use your library card to access the Concord library. Hours by branch, so across the county, these are all the different county libraries. So we have 40 open hours, and, you know, various towns and cities within the county have several more. And so the goal here that we're really working towards is ideally a future state in which all Contra Costa County libraries are open 56 hours a week, with a very big concentration on trying to, you know, have the library open on Sundays in particular. And this is kind of the interesting slide, I think. You know, I'm not an expert in funding by any means, or in, you know, ballot measures or anything like that. But this was some research done by some commissioners at the Contra Costa County Library Commission. And they basically studied other local Bay Area counties and their library funding. So if you look at the chart, you'll see that we looked at Marin, Napa, Alameda, Solano. And Contra Costa is the lowest funded on the right at $36.31 per capita. Marin is on the higher end at $121. But the disparity is pretty vast. And so the reason that those other libraries have as much funding as they do, underneath, you'll see that box where they have additional funding sources. And those additional funding sources come in the form of parcel taxes, you know, utility taxes and things of that nature. So this is also kind of what the article in the East Bay Times was citing, is that, you know, despite such low funding, our libraries are really, you know, reaching a lot of the community and doing quite a lot. So I think imagine what else we could do if we had more funding. And to, really, in closing and to wrap up, you know, I think what I'm here for today is really just to share with you a little bit more about, you know, the situation with the Contra Costa County library and the funding. You know, I think our goal really is to try to get libraries open more, and particularly on Sundays, with a goal of at least four staffed hours on Sundays. Staffing is important versus self-service. I think just a quick aside on that. Staffing means when you go to the library, you can go to a librarian and ask for help finding resources, navigating to certain materials that you're looking for. Unstaffed means you're kind of on your own, trying to navigate that. The ultimate goal is, again, 56 fully-staffed service hours at all of the full-service branches of the Contra Costa County library. And so the ask is that when a ballot measure to fund the Contra Costa County libraries comes forth, you know, we really hope that you all can be an advocate for that. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. Anything I can't answer, I can take back to the county and the other commissioners. But really, we just wanted to plant a seed about what the library is doing, you know, how much it's doing despite low funding and just the consideration of what else it could be doing if there were additional funding going to the Contra Costa County libraries. So with that, thank you so much for your time and attention.
Amanda, thank you. Questions? Brian?
Hi. My understanding was that the county was opposed to Sunday hours unless all the libraries got them. Is that still the case?
That is still the case. So that is one of the reasons why we feel like it's not just a local library issue. It's not a matter of can Moraga fund Sunday opening? Can the Friends of the library support that? It's more of an issue of can we fund Sunday opening for all Contra Costa County libraries? Yes.
I have one. I understand that, I know that Moraga, we all know building. And I guess we maintain and cover the operating costs. Is that the case across the county? Do you know?
To my knowledge, it is slowly transitioning to that. In other words, I think recently I saw something where the county had completed some, I forget if it was renovations on the Pinole Library, and then transferred ownership and management of the library to the city. So I believe that is the direction that everything is moving, if it's not currently in that position.
Okay. Great. I may follow up, but go ahead.
I may not have any answers beyond that.
Let's rotate it.
I was looking at the charts, the difference between the hours. So with fewer hours, 16 fewer hours than Arinda.
I was looking at the charts and I saw that, sorry, I have to repeat myself. And I was seeing a difference in the hours. And Arinda is first place with 56 hours in terms of utilization. Moraga is second place in the county with only 40 hours of utilization. So if I were to look at this data and look at the data point where you said that cities may fund six, 12, or 16 extra weekly hours, am I to assume that both Arinda and Lafayette are self-funding for that 16 additional hours?
Yes, because the county provides for 40 hours, base hours, at every library. How they fund it, I don't, I'm not entirely clear on where the money flows, but yes, they are funding the additional hours.
It would be great to understand that, because, so to the ask, do you know when a potential ballot measure might be? And the reason why I'm asking that is we recently had a ballot measure, Measure T, that all of us endorsed, and it failed, which is going to result in mass layoffs in the Akalani's High School District. What I, the sense that I'm getting is that our residents are somewhat reticent to vote for additional parcel taxes or other types of things. So it would be really instructive if we could find out exactly how Arinda and Lafayette are funding that. Given our high utilization rate, I believe there's probably some untapped demand, given the fact that we have so many fewer hours than our neighboring communities. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I think that's a great follow-up item as well. And then with respect to the ballot measure timing, I don't know exactly when that will be. I do know, though, that we really just started, you know, all the commissioners are out talking to their towns and cities now, essentially. And that's probably going to continue over the next several months. So my guess is we're not going to have a ballot measure for some time, but more than likely, I would think, probably tied to the, you know, general election timeframe as opposed to off-cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there questions or comments?
All my questions have been answered, but I would like to thank you for coming to us, to educating us about this really important issue. Libraries are valued in this town very, very much. And I'd like to see us open 56 hours as well, like the rest of our neighbors in La Mirinda.
Wonderful, thank you.
Great.
Just had a quick question. Hi, Amanda. Was there a dollar amount to fund all county libraries for the full 56 hours?
I don't know how much that would come out to be, but it sounds like it would have to be on a much larger scale than, yeah, kind of what, you know, as I mentioned, individual cities funding.
Understood.
I will see if we can, you know, get a better handle on that figure.
Okay.
As part of follow-up.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Somewhere around 35%, I suspect, over. If you're funding 40 hours now and you need additional 16, if you ratio it.
Yeah, I mean, some libraries already have, you know, funding for that. They may change the hours they're open. But, you know, I think the general idea is they may shift a little bit in order to open on Sundays, if that becomes an option in the future.
Do you guys have any additional comments? I have a couple of comments. And one, you know, like town council member Maggio, really complimentary of the library system. You know, when the internet really became ingrained in our psyches or in our operations, our daily, I use, I fully expected the libraries to go away because of the easier access to information. And in fact, the libraries have very much embraced the new technologies, and in many ways are leading in that with regard to information management and distribution, including making newspapers available for, via the library cards. I also had the opportunity to visit recently the Pleasant Hill New Library, which is a very nice facility, and includes a maker lab, which covers everything from sewing machines to woodworking. And that's very, very impressive. I doubt if we'll ever get that far in Moraga, but it's still something really nice to see. And again, thank you so much for coming, and it's good to hear from you. And I'm glad you're focusing on using a consolidated election, i.e. November.
Lessons learned.
If you're going to float a measure, try to do it then.
Yeah, we'll see. I hope to be able to provide some updates on that. Sally?
Anything else from the Friends of the Library? Any comments or... You got to come up to the podium.
I'm Jane Lowell, and I was president of the library for a few years. The Friends of the library funded the staff on the Sunday hours, when we did have Sunday hours. But we funded, I think it was up to $28,000 a year for the staff. Now, we aren't going to get Sunday hours, so everybody's going to get Sunday hours, and that's not going to be it. But if we wanted to get Monday hours or a little, few more hours during the week, I believe that Arinda and Lafayette, the town pays for those. And we have been told that the town just doesn't have the money to pay for those extra hours. But Sunday is not going to be affected until everybody gets it, which is, who knows when. But if you wanted to expand on Mondays and then have the hours later, earlier and later during the week, then it's the town that would have to come up with the money.
Thank you.
One more question of you. I'm wondering, I'm curious and I don't know. I know that there are many programs for younger residents, meaning little kids. And teens were mentioned in the presentation. And I'm wondering, can you tell me something about attendance by teens, or are there any specific programs for teens?
There are a number.
And the staff is really ones who do that.
Hi, I'm Sally Whitaker. I'm the current president of the Friends. And we have so many teen programs that are going on. We also have adult programs at the library, too. We cover all the bases as far as special events, cultural events. That's where the Friends spend their money. And then in addition, we buy $25,000 in additional books, or do a refresh, or, you know, that type of thing. But they, the teens have all kinds of little programs. I mean, they just recently had, I think, some friendship bracelet thing that they did. And the kids from Campo came over. And there's homework help at all levels. It's not just for elementary. It goes all the way up to high school. And computer help. We also have some of our local kids working, you know, at the library, as well as working in our bookshop, volunteering, because they want extra volunteer hours. Looks great on their college apps and whatnot. So there's a lot of teen involvement. If you go to the library, you will see them. But not, there's certain hours, like, you know, 3:30 on, so. And the towns really do, you see the three that have the 56 hours. All three of those towns give money to support that. So we're not here begging, but anything that the town can throw our way, we would certainly appreciate. Thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
Thanks, Sally.
Thanks to all of you.
Thank you. And one of the things we just passed along was the June newsletter of all the happenings at the library, including some of those events, and also bumper sticker, so you can support the Friends of the Library.
Thank you, Amanda. Did you have something for...
Yeah, I just wanted to make one quick comment. Thank you for the question about programs for kids. I have three little ones, and they go to the library several times a week to take part in the programs there. So thank you for everything that you're doing to support that. It really means a lot to my family.
Okay, super. Yes, thank you. Are there, are there any public comments on this? We have members of the public in the audience. I see no hands, so we will move on to public communication. Okay. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the town council on items that are not on the agenda. You will have up to three minutes to make your comments. The council cannot discuss details or vote on items not on the agenda. If necessary, questions may be referred to the town manager for a brief comment or for further review. Are there any public comments? If you would state your name and...
Hello, is the microphone?
Yes.
My name is Casey Rain, and I live in the Campolindo neighborhood. And I am here...
It's not?
My name is Casey Rain, and I'm in the Campolindo neighborhood. And I am here to request that the city council consider and entertain a proclamation in the upcoming month declaring June LGBTQ Pride Month. And I request that the town consider raising the LGBTQ pride flag in a manner consistent and suitable to town practices. And if staff needs assistance with the proclamation or in any other matters, I am here to volunteer my time. And if this town does not have a flag, I am here to offer to donate a flag, so that there is no cost or impact to the town budget. Thank you.
Casey, thank you for your information. We are progressing a proclamation. So it's underway and working with Wendell Baker on that. Wendell Baker, we're working with him on it.
You're working with Wendell?
Yeah.
I should have talked to him.
Flag is another issue, and maybe we can chat about that.
I'd love to have that conversation, and I understand some things take time, so happy to help in any way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Any other public comments? I see no other public, so let's move on. And that takes us to adoption of the meeting agenda. And I would like to propose that tonight we switch agenda items eight, which is public hearings, and item nine, which is department reports. The reason for this is that Barry Miller, a longtime consultant for the town of Moraga, will be actively participating in item eight, and he is expect, he expects to arrive late. So that is what I would like to propose, or do I have him? Second. I just proposed it. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. I see, any, before I... Well, I missed the public comment. So there any public comments on this? No, okay. That moves us on to the consent agenda. And... Does a member of the council wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Carrie?
I request that we pull 6.4, just so we can have a staff presentation on that item.
Okay. Anybody else? I would also like to pull item 6.3, which is the Local Sales Tax Oversight Committee. So that leaves items one and two, 6.1 and 6.2, which are approval of minutes, and also move to authorize cancellation of the regular town council meeting on July 9th, 2025. Is there a, well, are, there are no, there are no members of the public present. Is there a motion to approve 6.1 and 6.2? So moved.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Moves, it's passed unanimously. Okay, item 6.3, which is the Local Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And let me bring up my file here. Okay, the reason, just a very small thing. I was hoping that we'd have representatives here, but we don't. I see.
But staff is available to answer any questions you might have.
Right. So...
There's a lizard in the back of the chambers.
Would he have the information? Okay. I was going to ask them for some recommendations in terms of our, in terms of our doing, our making decisions with regard to how they spend the money, or how the money is spent, and what they have found from their reviews. I'm not sure you can answer that, Scott.
Yeah, that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's really not the committee's role. Their role is to look at how you're spending, how the town spends the money and reports it, and does it comply with what the voters approved. The council's decision-making body in terms of how to spend the money.
I understand that. However, since they do, you know, review the receipts and all the detailed information, I would have liked to at least given them the opportunity to comment, or give us the, whatever they observe. Okay. It looks like my pulling this is not of great value. Does anyone have a comment on it? Okay, so let's move on to 6.4. Carrie, you pulled this one?
Yeah, just, as these are public sculptures that will be out in our, on our parks and in our library, I thought it would be nice just to have a roll-through of exactly what it is that we're placing.
Yes, thank you, members of the council, McKenzie Brady Parks and Recreation Director. And I do not have a formal presentation, so I will go through the PDF of the attachments. So let me get those. I have still not mastered moving the mouse on that over there, but we will try. All right, so there are four sculptures by artist Buddy Broadwin. And we are proposing, Art in Public Spaces and Parks and Recreation Commission has proposed and approved two sculptures to go at West Commons Park. And one of those is Vortex, which here is a drawing of it. And we'll get to a photo, which, that is sideways, so just turn your head a little bit. Oh, gosh, okay.
Does it move?
Yep, hold on. I, I'm just very horrible at a... I can't see that far anyway. Okay, there we go. So that's what it looks like.
Is it a wind-driven sculpture?
Uh, yes, yes, it is. And now I... Uh, yes. Yes, it is. And now I will go back. So that, that is Vortex, and then Going Mobile Number One and Going Mobile Number Two, two separate ones, but they will be in separate locations. This is Going Mobile Number One, and that would also be in West Commons Park. And those are our, our public works renderings for the, the installation, for the base, the footing. And then, I must've missed something here. Okay. I thought I had the location for them. These are two different ones, Going Mobile One and Going Mobile Two. They are similar, but they are not going, one will be in West Commons Park, and then one will be along the Lafayette Maraga Regional Trail.
Oh, cool.
So outside of St. Mary's, so that, along the entrance to St. Mary's College, the walkway that goes from St. Mary's Road to the trail, it'll be right in that general area.
Can I ask, is it, so there's a big empty space of land right before you get to the ranch fencing, the rail fencing? Is that where we're talking about, the placement?
It's, it's to the east, the right. So when you're walking towards the trail, it's going to be off to the right, in a redwood grove.
Cool.
And, go ahead. And then here is a pear made out of rebar, and the proposed location, just so you know, we had professionals do this. The, it would be on a little bit of a base, a footing there, and that is, so here's the, the entrance to the library over here. The parking lot is, is over on the left, and then walking up, there's an empty space, and it would be on the left right there. And this is what that pedestal would look like. And here are locations. So as I mentioned, Going Mobile, I believe it's Going Mobile Number Two will be in West Commons Park, along with Vortex, and then the pear at the library, and then along town-owned property along the trail would be where Going Mobile Number One is.
By the parking lot. Yeah. Is that your?
That's my presentation.
Thank you so much, Mackenzie. Any, any questions for Mackenzie?
What comment?
Or comment?
Mackenzie, are we ready for comments?
I, I think we can...
Anyone else have questions? Mackenzie, I'd like to state for the record, and, and offer thanks to you, and, am I on here? Yeah. To you and to the Art and Public Spaces Committee
with your guidance and great assistance. I'm so pleased that that committee continues to do the work that they do. I know they work hard. They do a great job, and it brings great value to the town of Maraga. I think it's very important that we have this cultural opportunity in this media, and as far as I'm concerned, the more sculpture, the better, the more murals, the better, the more art, the better. I understand it's challenging because all of these pieces have to be placed in public areas, and placement can sometimes be challenging. I also understand that some of these, or many or most of these are on loan. I don't know if we own any of these sculptures outright, if they were gifted to us or not. I don't know that much of history, but I do know that means that the committee has to continue to work with artists and discover new artists, and continue to do that work to bring this media into town. And, and so I thank you for your guidance. Thanks to those on the committee. Graham, I think you're, you're on that committee. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Thank you, sir. I once in a prior public art discussion compared Maraga to a house that has been around for 50 years and no one ever bothered to hang any pictures. And in the pictures, it was the, the art. Since that time, and it hasn't been very long, I think it's been only a year, there's been a flood of public art that's been going around our town, and I just thank the Art and Public Spaces Committee. I thank you, Mackenzie, for the focus on getting this done. It, art builds community, it builds identity, and I just am so appreciative of where we are, and I'm really excited about where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? I have a, I guess a question or two, and then comments. So we, we're, we're funding the $500 installation. Is that correct for each of them?
Yes, so there is an Art and Public Spaces fund, but what I, we, we were covering staff time and some of the supplies to install these, so what we are doing for this upcoming, the next budget cycles is to, I'm pulling some of the budget from my maintenance into a separate line item specifically for this, to essentially say, Art and Public Spaces, this is, this is how many we can fund this year.
Okay. And we accept liability of some sort for these pieces of art, and that liability can go, can be both to cover damage or, or replacement of the piece of art itself, but also are there any considerations that it could be the source of a liability lawsuit to the town, and I presume there's, there are no concerns about that in this case?
Correct. Not, not on these ones. So there have been sculptures that have been proposed by Art and Public Spaces or other members of the community, and it hasn't made it to you all because of a potential distraction along the road, or, or they've recommended to, to put pieces not along the road and, and in West Commons Park and not along Maraga Road, so that there are not those distractions, so that we are hoping to lessen the potential for that liability.
I value that you guys take that perspective. And finally, it, it's, it's not noted in the documentation. Is there a, a target loan duration for, for these pieces of art?
Yes, so...
I missed that.
In the application, I believe that these are all for three years.
Is it?
So it's, it's handwritten. Okay, so this one is, Vortex is for five-plus years.
I see.
And then same with Going Mobile One.
Okay.
And Going Mobile Two.
Sure, they're, they're of significant duration. There, there's another form in here that's, that slot is blank. That's, that's great. Then finally, I just echo my fellow town council members' thanks and, and excellent work, and, and certainly we are developing a, a population of artwork, which is great to see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we now have two additional items for, on the consent agenda to, to vote on. And are there any public comments on these items 6.3 and 6.4? I see no hands being raised by our one member of the public. So, see you later, Casey. Is there a motion?
Motion to move items 6.3 and 6.4 for approval.
Second?
Happy to second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it was passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us on to announcements and reports on activities. And, let's see. Graham, would you like to kick us off this week?
Sure. Yeah. So with Mike on, I attended Marin Clean Energy Board of Directors meeting earlier this month representing town of Maraga. A couple interesting agenda items. One in particular might be able to support one of our public works proposed projects, as there are some dollars available for municipal projects with photovoltaics and/or battery backup storage. So looking forward to speaking with Public Works about that. Couple other smaller items. Obviously, we touched on Art and Public Spaces and addressed the items that we brought forth on the consent agenda, so good to see that move through. Also attended, along with mayor and other town council members, last week's Maraga Arinda Fire Department's monthly board meeting. Found it to be positive and happy to speak in support of maintaining the 24/7 ambulance and paramedic service. And then just more so, something for me to be mindful of, had a handful of conversations with town of Maraga residents in various neighborhoods who would just love to learn more about their concerns and how to comply with that five-foot clearance between perimeter of their homes and vegetation. So just something for us to further explore to support our community members in their understanding of how to comply in alignment with fire safety measures.
Thank you, Lisa.
Councilmember Dolan and I attended the Recycle Smart Board Meeting.
Microphone.
Oh, I turned it off. Councilmember Dolan and I attended the Recycle Smart Meeting on the 22nd. It was a relatively light agenda, just before the big agenda hits. On July, the board will choose the successful bidder to become the franchisee for the solid waste collection for Contra Costa, for, for the JPA. So that should be, that, I will come back to you, and Brian will come back to you with that announcement at that time. Also, just a general announcement, since Councilmember Teal brought up community concern with regards to fire safety and compliance with, with fire safety regulations, I understand that tonight at the Maraga Country Club, there should be a well-attended meeting with our two chiefs, our police chief and our fire chief. So that meeting is happening right now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Brian?
I attended two meetings that have both been previously mentioned, the MOFD Board, where the issue, as we all know, was the ambulance continuation of the 24-hour ambulance, and I spoke in favor of that, and then the Recycle Smart Board Meeting. Primary agenda item was a review of the executive director's performance, which of course is not public, so nothing to report.
Thank you, Brian. Carrie?
Thank you. I will now be providing brief verbal reports on each activity I have undertaken in my official capacity as vice mayor, as well as each activity I have undertaken in that time that are of significant interest to the Maraga community as a whole. On May 15th, I created an edited clip from our last council meeting, including a call to action for residents to attend the 52225 MOFD meeting, and posted it to La Marinda families on Facebook as well as on Nextdoor. Additionally, I posted updates to those posts and additional posts for the public, and answered their questions through May 18th. On May 16th, I received a presentation from a government technology company called Polymorphic on how AI can be utilized to increase customer service efficiencies in our town. Their analysis of our town services estimates that approximately 55% of the town's customer service workload is automatable. I shared the presentation materials with the town manager. Between May 18th to May 20th, I attended the American, the American Public Transportation Association, or APTA, Legislative Conference in Washington DC, with County Connection staff and Walnut Creek Mayor Pro Tem Kevin Wilk and Danville Councilmember Robert Store. During the conference, County Connection partnered with Tri Delta Transit, Livermore Amador Valley Transportation Agency, and WestCAT to form the East Bay Transit Alliance. As part of this group, I met with the following members of Congress and government leaders to lobby on behalf of both County Connection funding priorities and the town of Maraga's, and, and the town's Maraga Way federal earmark, as well as additional wildfire concerns and resources that I have raised previously on this council. On May 19th, Congressman, I met with Congressman Garamendi's staff and transportation policy advisor. I also that day met with Senator Schiff's transportation policy staff, and subsequently with Senator Patia's transportation staff. I also met with the French ambassador to the United States to learn about transit capacity adjustments for mega events such as FIFA, the Olympics, or the Super Bowl. We are, San Francisco Bay Area will be one of the venues for FIFA next year, so this was an important discussion, especially from a public transportation standpoint. On the May 20th, I met with Congressman Mark DeSohnier, and then as well with Congressman Eric Swalwell, and was able to get a challenge coin from him, which is pretty cool. Beginning on the evening of 520, I transitioned to my professional capacity to participate in the Bay Area Council's DC delegation. Though I was in my professional capacity, I also brought up the same concerns regarding Maraga's federal earmark for Maraga Way, as well as additional fire, wildfire resources when relevant with the following. On May 20th, I spoke with an executive from Lyft regarding last mile service to BART for Maraga residents and St. Mary's students. I then also on 521, met with Congressman Sam Licardo, staffed Congressman Ro Khanna, Congressman Mike Thompson, again with Congressman Mark DeSohnier, and again with Congressman Eric Swalwell, where I also introduced him to the Bay Area Council delegation. I also then later met with Congressman Jimmy Padilla, and then Congressman Garamendi, where we also chatted privately about his family friend Graham Teal. Later, I met with US Senator Alex Padilla, who also discussed his bipartisan Fix Our Forest Act, which will, among other things, establish a wildfire intelligence center for the United States, which he confirmed could include some of the innovations I have, I previously discussed at La Marinda, at the La Marinda Council's meeting. Subsequent to that, I met with US Senator Adam Schiff, Speaker America, Amerita, Nancy Pelosi, and California Transportation Commissioner Carl, Carl Gordino, who formerly chaired that commission, who also informed me of state funding programs that can be utilized for our emergency evacuation routes. And town manager, per your request, I will follow up with you after this meeting for further information on this particular funding stream. Later that evening, I met with the San Bernardino County Fire Chief Dan Muncy, where I discussed the, the drone wildfire technology that I'd previously brought up at the La Marinda Cities meeting. I then, the next day, met with 22 officials in the Trump administration, including four White House advisors, and the, the other share of which were mostly with the US Department of Transportation. Later that evening, I also met with an executive from Archer Aviation, who was working on developing a prototype drone for the US Defense Department that could be utilized for fighting wildfires, similar to the innovation that I had discussed previously at the La Marinda Cities meeting. Also on 522, I met with Orso Group Municipal Branding Consultant Frank Holland regarding applying his expertise on branding for municipalities to Maraga. Thank you.
Thank you. I will cover just a couple items. In particular, the, excuse me, the MOFD Board Meeting on May 21st. All town council members were able to attend, except Carrie, who was, was remote, which I think is, is one sign of our commitment, as well as our town manager and a fair number of other people. The, the members of the MOFD Board noted, really with pleasure, that they had more attending that night than they usually have, or it was, it was halfway well-attended. And I was focused, of course, on ambulance service in the MOFD community, and especially for us, for, for Maraga. I got to represent Maraga in the, with regard to paraphrasing the letter that we submitted advocating for full coverage, and ultimately, and, and also Lisa spoke, and Graham spoke, and, and Brian spoke, and Scott spoke also. The, ultimately, they voted in favor of the 24/7 ambulance coverage. This is the budget for the entire district, so that covers both Maraga and Arinda. And they will have a final vote in June. We'll monitor that and make sure that it's covered. Then on Saturday, the 24th, I had the pleasure of representing Maraga at the St. Mary's College commencement ceremony. 435 graduating seniors, and I, I wished all of them well, and especially for those that did not have wild cheering sections, that some did, I clapped extra hard and long. Final note... Final note, on Monday, Memorial Day, I was at, actually, in Walnut Creek at their Commons picnic area or park, and for their excellent Memorial Day event that they sponsor every year, got a phone call that Maraga's flag at the Commons was not at half-staff. And that is, and it was reinforced to me that on Memorial Day in the United States, US flags are flown at half-staff until noon. So, I contacted Chief King and sent people out to the flag to lower it, but found it locked. I'm not sure if they were ever successful, but I note this just that it's, for the future, we need to, should make sure that we arrange for the flag to be lowered on Memorial Day to be consistent.
Mr. Mayor and as a council, that was resolved, and the flag was lowered as it was at the other public facilities. It was an inadvertent, unintentional oversight.
Yeah.
So, I apologize.
No, no biggie, but I raise it partially just in case someone is watching and was sensitive to the subject.
Yeah, understood.
That completes my brief reports.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, I know that we, at some point in the near future, will be reviewing the town's holiday display policy. Would something like which holidays the flag should be lowered to half-staff be addressed in that policy discussion, or is that strictly for December holidays?
The holiday item will be on the next agenda, and there's a US flag code policy, and there are guidelines for state flags and our own flags, so that doesn't need to change. They're separate. But I will say, we had a speaker who had the suggestion for a certain flag to be flown on our flag, on the flagpole. That's come up, I've been here over two years, it's come up before, and the town has decided, Town Council, to stay with a fairly universe, not universal, but very common, fairly common policy, which is the flagpoles are for flags. They're not, they're not political statements. It's there for the US flag and our local flag. If council would like to allow the flagpole to be used for political purposes, you can make that decision, but it's not that common. Some cities do it. You'll see the Missing in Action, POW, flag, and there are communities that have put up the pride flag and other things, the Ukrainian flag. But when you start to do that, then you have to open it, it's free speech, and then any group can come in, including groups that would put offensive and controversial flags. You can't say no. So, but that's your prerogative as a council. The town has historically, since incorporation, not done that.
The intent is for June to have, we have some small pride flags that we historically put on the deus during June, and, you know, that's optional, but if that's okay with folks, we'll put them out, and then you can decide whether you want to keep it or not. Okay, so that covers announcements and reports on activities. Now, we have a dilemma.
I wish we didn't do the Town Manager Report.
It's okay, I'm used to being over excluded and forgotten.
I thought I gave it to him, because he was talking about flags.
At the very end, I'll do the follow-up items and talk about upcoming agenda items.
Sorry about that. I apologize. Barry, we changed the agenda to accommodate your schedule, but now you've messed it up.
No, no, it's actually perfect timing. It's perfect timing.
No, we moved nine in front of eight. Do we want to adjust the?
If the council wants to move it back.
I would like to move that we revert back to the original agenda as proposed.
Second.
Any comments, public comments? I, how do you, how do you vote? Yea or nay? Yea?
Say nay.
Yea.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. So, moved. So, that brings us to item number 8A, and do we need to do ex parte on this legal counsel? It has some land connotation to it, but it isn't a specific piece of property.
Right, it's a legislative act, and the applicant, if there is an applicant, is the town, so we don't need to disclose ex parte.
We're okay. Good. So, this is Proposed Amendments to the Maraga Zoning Ordinance Title VIII to Implement the 2023/2031 Maraga Housing Element. Is there a presentation, please?
Yes, good evening. Am I on here?
You're on.
Okay, thank you.
Green light.
Nice to see everybody again and be back. We're just bringing the PowerPoint presentation up, and then we'll go through an overview of the changes that are proposed and ask for council action at the end. And thank you for accommodating schedule changes.
If I can ask while we're waiting, it's here, okay.
I'll hold my question. You can ask anyway. Oh, okay. Now, all I have to do is get the advance or to go. I got it. Okay, sorry about that. I had, it was on, and I had turned it off. Okay, so the context for why we're here tonight is this is an implementing action for the Maraga Housing Element. And as you, even those who were not on the council at the time, recall, we were required to update our housing element along with all of the cities and towns in the Bay Area by January 31st, 2023. We went through an intensive process to do that and demonstrate to the state successfully that Maraga had the capacity to accommodate its fair share of the region's housing needs by 2031. Our housing element was adopted, it was certified, and we're now expected to implement all of the programs in the element that we promised the state that we would implement. So, one of the components of the housing element that's required is an analysis of development constraints in the town. Again, this is mandated by state law, it's sort of a self-audit of our zoning regulations and development practices. And the analysis found that certain aspects of the municipal code required amendments to eliminate potential constraints and also to ensure compliance with state law. And many of the things that are in tonight's agenda packet in tonight's ordinance are actually state requirements. We're making what I would call minor adjustments to incorporate what is already required under state law. In this case, the state is saying, we want it in your municipal code, even if it's state law. So, they have given us that direction in their comments on the housing element. So, you'll see on the slides this evening where action is state law, it'll say on the slide, this is state law. So, we're basically walking you through those that are in the housing element because we felt that they would be helpful for the town in meeting its housing needs, and those that are mandated either by HCD or by state law. And so, there are five programs that are in the element that we're going to be talking about this evening, and I'll, rather than reading them off now, they're all covered by the slides that you're about to see, so we'll go through these. Okay. So, carryoversites, this is the first change. This is Assembly Bill 1397, requires cities and towns to identify what they call carryoversites. These are sites that we listed in previous housing elements. We carry them forward year after year, or cycle after cycle, hoping that they get developed, but nothing happens, but we continue to list them. The state is basically saying, we want these sites to be developed, you want them to be developed, create incentives to develop them, and they have required that all communities that are carrying over sites from previous housing elements include a statement in their codes that development on these properties is allowed by right if 20% of the units are affordable. So, the code amendment is, in the ordinance, affirms this state requirement and this provision. Just to point out, there are only two carryoversites in Maraga. These are sites that were in the last couple of housing elements, actually, the last two housing elements. One is what we commonly call Area 14 in the Maraga Center Specific Plan Area. This is the vacant property that's behind the assisted living buildings on Country Club. There's been various proposals to develop it over the years, but that is one of the sites. The other is Area 5A, which is west of Laguna Creek, near the north end of School Street. You can't currently access that property because there's no bridge across Laguna Creek, but there is, it has been carried forward in the last two housing elements. So, if there's a project there that happens to propose 20% affordable units, then it would be subject to this provision. The next change addresses cohousing and livework. So, first, there are definitions of these two types of housing that have been added to the, or that are being added to the code. Cohousing is a type of housing where there are private rooms clustered around a common living space. This can be new construction, or it can be adaptation of an existing building. In Maraga, you're less likely to have it be adapted, an existing building adapted. Most of the housing doesn't really lend itself to conversion to cohousing, though you could do an addition and so forth. But this is a housing type that's popular in college towns and university areas, also among older adults, an opportunity to age in place in a different type of housing. Livework is housing that's designed to have the occupant work within the space. It's popular before the pandemic, even more popular now, and there are various livework prototypes around. The idea here is that this could be another housing type for Maraga Center or the REEM Center if the market responded to that need. And neither of these is defined in the current code. So, the amendments would add definitions, allow cohousing in the R12 and R2024, which are multifamily housing districts, and in mixed-use zoning districts. And cohousing would be allowed in the, actually, cohousing would be allowed in those districts, and livework would be allowed in the four mixed-use districts. So, this implements two of the programs. On these slides, the way I formatted these is, whenever you see a blue box, that's the kind of the bottom line. The blue box is what is changing in the code. Next is a state-required amendment to define manufactured homes and state explicitly that manufactured homes that are on foundations are permitted in single-family homes, subject to the same standards as single-family housing. Right now, the code doesn't address manufactured homes, so this would add a definition and indicate that these are permitted in single-family zones. The amendments on group homes, again, reply to comments that we received from the state. These are not comments, these are not things that we had in the initial housing element, but when we submitted the housing element and the state sent it back to us and said, you need to address these things before we'll certify your element. One of them was a definition of group homes, and again, a statement that group homes are treated the same as other single-family houses that are occupied by families or other types of households, basically expressly permitting them, listing them as a permitted use in residential Similarly, with residential care facilities, the existing municipal code does not define residential care facilities. It has something called congregate care facilities, which it defines as the same as residential care, but it's only for seniors in the municipal code. Residential care can actually serve more than just seniors. It can be, it can serve children, it can serve adolescents, it can serve adults and so forth. And the state has fairly complex regulations for residential care facilities, breaking them up into large facilities and small facilities, which are six people or less. Small facilities, by state law, are allowed by right in every residential, every place residential uses are allowed. Licensed, large residential care facilities can require a use permit. So, this adds the definition of residential care facility, adjusts the definition of congregate care facility, and also indicates that these are subject to the same standards as other housing of the same type in each district. So, we've, again, done these changes to comply with state law. Next is supportive and transitional housing. This is housing for folks who are exiting homelessness. Every community in California is required to allow transitional and supportive housing subject to the same regulations. Again, it's the, it's sort of, I'm repeating myself, but it's the same principle, which is, if it's the same type of structure, a single-family home, it doesn't matter whether that single-family home is occupied by a family of four or supportive, is used for supportive and transitional housing. It's permitted in single-family zoning districts. Interestingly, in this case, all of Maraga's residential districts complied, but the mixed-use districts didn't list this as a permitted use. So, we're adding supportive and transitional as a permitted use in the mixed-use zones. Employee housing, and I know this seems pretty wonky when you get into this kind of stuff, but this is, this is, again, what we were asked to do by the state in their review of our housing element. Define employee housing and include a definition that expressly states it includes farmworker housing. Our needs assessment concluded we did not have a need for farmworker housing because there were no active agricultural uses with farmworkers needing housing here, but we were asked to please do this, this change, complying with the Health and Safety Code, so we've added that definition and stated that this is a permitted use for six persons or less, treated the same as other residential structures. Low-barrier navigation centers, so we had Assembly Bill 101, which was passed about five years ago, that requires all jurisdictions to allow low-barrier navigation centers as a use permitted by right in mixed-use districts and commercial districts if housing is a permitted use in those districts. Interestingly, here, the REEM mixed-use districts complied with this, but the Maraga Center districts did not, because that zoning was prepared before the AB 101 became effective. So, we're catching up and adding those LBNCs to the list of permitted uses in the Maraga Center Specific Plan Area. Emergency shelters, the state informed us that our definition of emergency shelters needed to be updated because of Assembly Bill 2339 passed in 2023, and that our parking requirements could only be based on the number of employees in an emergency shelter, not on the number of beds. So, this amendment addresses that. It amends the parking requirement, it amends the definition, and it also identifies residential as a permitted use in the institutional zoning district. So, just to kind of take a step back on this, the state says, if you allow emergency shelters in a zoning district, you have to make that a zoning district where housing is a permitted use. So, they don't want you to say, well, this is not for Maraga, but in other communities, we're allowing shelters, but only in our heavy industrial zone, for example. So, if you're allowing emergency shelters, you have to allow housing in that zone. And in the institutional zoning district, it doesn't expressly list housing as a permitted use. So, we've added residential uses that are consistent with the campus master plan to the list of permitted uses to meet that requirement. Reasonable accommodations, so this is the provision of the municipal code that allows persons with disabilities to request relief from certain zoning standards in order to remove barriers, such as putting a wheelchair ramp in the front setback when structures might not otherwise be allowed. There are certain findings that the planning commission needs to make to allow for reasonable, the council needs to make for a reasonable accommodation. One of those findings was the impact on surrounding uses, and the state found that to be subjective, and asked that we modify that. This is not just Maraga, by the way, this is every city and town in California that had that finding, got the same comment, and was asked to remove subjective findings. So, we still address what I'm calling here, the physical attributes of the property and structures. That's still in the findings, but it doesn't expressly say the impact on surrounding uses. Our density bonus language, although the council updated the density bonus requirements in 2022, it seems that this changes every year with new legislation. There were amendments to the state law in 2023 and 2024, and we haven't quite caught up, so they wanted us to add a statement to our code. So they wanted us to add a statement to our code saying, "In the event of a conflict between the town's resolutions and the state's, sorry, the town, the town's regulations and the state's regulations, the state prevails." So we have made that amendment per their recommendation. Parking, which is maybe the more interesting part of these changes. The housing element found that there were owner's requirements for studio apartments, where studios basically had to provide the same amount of parking as a three-bedroom apartment. So there was no distinction between number of bedrooms or size of a unit in what the parking standards was. It was just two spaces for all multifamily units. Several years ago, Moraga adopted special parking standards for the R-20 zone that were scaled based on the number of bedrooms. And when we created the mixed-use zoning for the REEM Shopping Center, we also used those scaled parking standards, but those had not yet been applied more broadly to the other multifamily zones in the city. So this was the major impetus of this, is to make it a little easier. If you were building a studio in a one-bedroom, now the requirement is one space per one-bedroom unit or studio unit in those zoning districts. We also took a look at the guest parking requirement in the housing element and found, you can see on this little table on the right, Moraga required one guest parking space for every two units, which was significantly higher than the requirements for Arinda, Lafayette, Danville, and most other communities. So this is proposing an adjustment to the guest parking standards to be more in line with those nearby communities. I'll go through those specific amendments to the parking standards. So first, we're adding a cross-reference throughout each of the zoning standards in every, for each category in the zoning code that says C-section. Sorry, I don't have the MMC citation right here, but it's a specific section for where the parking standards are located consistently through all of the districts. I mentioned the reduction in the requirements for studios, which already applies in several zoning districts. The amendments to the guest parking requirements. So you have one space for a two-to-four-unit building, and then one space for each four units thereafter. And then the fractional requirements would be rounded up. So you would, you would have to provide more spaces rather than just half a space. Obviously, you're not going to provide a half a parking space. Also, we amended our senior housing parking requirements to comply with the state density bonus laws for senior housing and assisted living, and those are already in effect in, in the REEM Center and the R-20 zoning district, and they'll now apply in the other mixed-use and multifamily zones. We are excluding structured parking, such as podium parking garages, from the floor-area ratio calculation if that parking is only serving residential uses within the building. And this is because the way our code is written out, if you're calculating the floor-area ratio in a building, it's, it is basically only for the non-residential space. So this is for internal consistency and clarification, providing a means to reduce the number of spaces if car-sharing vehicles are provided, such as Zipcar, and then allowing spaces in multifamily parking podiums, in other words, parking garages, to meet commercial parking standards, which would be diagonal parking as opposed to right-angled parking. The other thing I think that's important to keep in mind here is that the state density bonus law has special parking standards that supersede all the town's standards. So a lot of projects that may come in in the future are not going to be using the town's standards anyway. They'll be using the state density bonus standards, which are more generous than the town's standards, more lenient. So that's a lot of information in a quick time. Just to point out that the planning commission had a hearing on this on April 15th, and there were a couple of issues that they brought up prior to their recommendation to the council to approve these ordinance, approve the ordinance and the MMC changes. There were a couple of questions about the guest parking requirement and how car-sharing might work. What was, what was meant by the term material standards for manufactured homes, which is a state building code reference? And then, I think, and rightfully so, the issue of, well, how are group homes and residential care facilities different? And how do they overlap? And, you know, sort of wanting a Venn diagram that showed how these things all connect to each other. We talked through that a little bit at the commission meeting. The recommendation for this evening is to consider public comment and wave first reading and introduce the ordinance, and you would have your second reading at a future council meeting. Just to point out the findings in the ordinance, that the amendments are consistent with the general plan, which they implement the general plan, and that the housing element is part of the plan. The changes are compatible with the uses in each district, which are primarily residential. There's a community need for the changes. The changes are consistent with public welfare and good zoning, and the ordinance is compliant with SEQA. There was a full EIR done for the Comprehensive Advanced Planning Initiative. All of these text amendments were anticipated at the time that we adopted and certified that EIR. And just also to conclude, you'll see me again. We're going to be coming back to you by the end of the year with more zoning changes. The housing element had a pretty ambitious roadmap for future zoning amendments. There was a lot of council interest at the time the general plan was adopted in looking at our scenic corridor regulations. Those are first up after this action. Then we'll be coming back with revisions to the R-20 and 24 zone, revisions to R-12 and R-6, and then revisions to the planned development process. And I believe that's the last slide. Thank you very much.
Barry, thank you very much. We will now have questions from the town council members. Not yet. And, and then, public comments. And if you have additional information relative to those public comments, we'll address that after that. Then we'll come back to the council, and we'll have deliberations, and then we'll act on it. Now, the question I have for staff is, this become, we're going to have to have a second reading. And does that second reading have to occur? I guess it doesn't have to occur on the 30th day. It has to occur by the 30th day, and that's the, then it becomes effective on the 30th day if we approve it tonight. Is that the case?
So you can have the second reading at least five days after the introduction of the ordinance. And then, once the second reading is concluded, then the ordinance will become effective 30 days after its adoption.
Okay.
And typically, the town puts ordinances on the consent calendar for the second reading.
Right. And I ask that partially because we have two more meetings before we go on recess. Okay, questions? Carrie, I guess you can go first, you raised your hand.
First question is regarding the carryover parcels, and it might also be generably applicable to all parcels. So recently, we had issues with which type of housing we allowed in ordinance by right, and there was a significant surprise for everyone in town government. So I'm wondering, we, there'd been discussion about reviewing the types of parcel, or types of housing that are allowed by right. I'm wondering if that discussion is applicable here? And have we reviewed our by-right housing types to ensure we do not have similar surprises as recently occurred in REEM Center?
So just to clarify, are you, are you talking about by right, which is what we're doing with the carryoversite? Or are you talking about a ministerial or administrative approval?
I guess that's my question.
Okay.
I'm trying to see whether or not that discussion from earlier this year, is it all in any way applicable to potential risks we may have with allowing by-right housing for these parcels? And then whether or not we've actually done a review to determine whether or not there are other less desirable housing types that we are allowing by right at our priority development areas?
So I defer to staff on that, but it might go, that might be a discussion for a different day. What we're talking about here tonight is something that was included in the housing element as a program or a policy. So that's already been adopted by the council. Everybody agreed that that was what the council was going to do. Now, what's before you is an ordinance that implements that program or policy and says, "Yes, we're going to rezone." And, and because there were certain parcels that carried over from the fifth cycle, we are going to rezone them to allow a by-right process. It doesn't mean they're automatically approved. They still have to be at least 20% affordable. They have to meet the objective standards, and they have to go through the process for design review.
And do we define which types of housing are allowed by right?
It's just the two, what we're talking about tonight are two parcels.
Right, but in the two parcels, do we provide a definition at all of what types of housing? Multifamily?
You do.
Congregate senior housing?
Yes, you do. And, and a lot of the uses that were in this presentation are among the uses that are permitted by right. Multifamily housing, single-family housing, you know, townhouses. It's listed in the zoning code under permitted uses.
Thank you.
And to the attorney's point, saying that it's allowed by right does not mean that it's automatically permitted. It still has to go through, it can go through planning commission hearings. You can't deny it, but you can still hold public hearings and address the design of the project and so forth.
I think the town manager knows what my concern is.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, I need to be careful because that project's not on the agenda. So there was another parcel in town in which there were, there's a number of permitted uses on that, and it was put up for sale. And the transaction has not been completed, so it's still going through. But the buyer would like to put a use in there that, in retrospect, we feel is not ideal for that location. Doesn't mean it's not appropriate for the town because there's plenty of that type of use. So I'm sorry for talking in riddles, but I have to be careful. With staff, with our new planning director, we've talked about that we're going to go through and do a review of permitted uses on certain properties. But Barry will be very careful not to offend the state or HCD and end up in a situation where we're preventing housing. It's just, as this council has the right to decide what types of uses should go in certain locations. And so we, we have to do a review of this and then come back and suggest changes.
And so nothing necessarily we're doing right now?
No.
It all interferes with what you're discussing?
Generally, yes. I was just asking the planning director because there was something in there that didn't raise a concern. But on our work, our work list of things to tackle internally, this is on that list, to go through and do a thorough review.
Okay. All parcels or just that?
Mainly in the commercial centers. And the commercial centers.
Okay.
We have to be careful we don't end up with unintended consequences that actually make things worse.
Right.
Because it's not just about making money for the property owner. It has to be, we have to balance in there is intelligent, logical land use.
Does that answer your question?
It does. I have more questions, but I'll yield to Councilmember Bullen.
Relative to the carryoversites, even if we don't take this action, we still have to do it, right?
You do, yeah.
So.
It's, it's kind of done for you.
It's state law.
Got it. The next question, go ahead.
Well, Brian, did you?
Wanted to make sure we didn't go down some rabbit hole when we have no choice.
Go ahead.
I just will say, with a lot of these, we argued with the state that we were already required by state law to do a lot of these things. Why do we have to amend our local code to say that? And essentially, they said, "Do you want to be certified?" I mean, you know, that was, that was how we got to where we are.
Got it. So all of these changes are ones that were required at the point of certification a year ago?
Most of them, not all of them, yeah.
So the next question I have, and this is probably within the guidelines of what you just, of what you just answered, but we don't really have a need, as far as I know, for navigation centers in Moraga. This is, even though there's no point in that here, we're still required to address that in the element.
Correct, and every jurisdiction in the state is going through this amendment right now.
Got it. The next one is the curious one of adding state supremacy clause. Isn't that already the law? Why do we need to state that here?
Sorry, which clause is this?
So.
When there's a conflict between local ordinance and state law. Yeah, okay.
Yes, that actually came up in the pro-housing application process as well. The state reviewers asked us if we would add something that said, "Well, we, we know that, we changed the density bonus law every year. We don't expect cities to try and keep up with us. So just put something in your code that says, "Before you say this is the law, check the state code because it may have changed."
Got it.
And I'll just say that I think that helps the public, you know, applicants, as well as staff who are reviewing the density bonus ordinance or the city, the town's codes, and they'll, they'll think that that is the right standard. And, but it helps remind everyone that we should check state law.
And then my last question has to do with the, the car-sharing piece. So at County Connection, as you may have heard in my, oh, you weren't here when I gave my updates.
I was here, yeah.
You're here, okay. So we're exploring a number of different last-mile potential solutions, given that our transportation, our transit frequency is only once an hour, which is not sufficient for people to be able to actually plan to use it. So in that, I was talking to our MTC Commissioner, Suneoak, about a new prototype that's being tested over at Gomentum Station, which is essentially a car-share, like a Zipcar, that somebody can utilize. It'll be, would be parked at a centralized location, potentially a transit hub here in Moraga. Somebody could go and access that car, take it to where they needed to go, and then drive home. And then a pilot would zoom in by satellite or whatever and drive it back to that centralized location. There are a number of other different innovative solutions for that last-mile service that are being discussed in addition to that. I'm just wondering if this car-sharing provision would allow for that kind of innovative thinking on transit options? Or if that would have to be a separate ordinance once we actually arrived at a potential solution?
I think you'd need to look at that more closely, depending on the specifics of the, of the scenario you're describing. Theoretically, if that space was within a multifamily development project and was being provided by a developer who is subsidizing the cost of the vehicle and those services, it would, it seems to me it would apply, but not knowing all of the multiple variations of that, I don't know.
You just struck on another, so if we were to have the, would we be allowed to, under this, or would it have to be something else?
Right.
To move the property owner's requirement to provide that type of transit option to go into the pool that the town might be implementing to help fund a last-mile service under County Connection?
It's possible. This is an existing requirement in the code, but it only applies in a couple of zoning districts. So it's basically expanding something that's already on the books to MCSP area.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Okay, thanks.
This side?
Just comments for discussion when we get to them.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay, and I think this has already been answered, but in a lot of your presentation, you said HCD asked you, or asked us.
Right.
Is my interpretation is they directed us?
Yes, they, I think we went through three or four rounds of review between when we submitted the element in January and when we received certification in September. During each round, the letter got shorter, but the letter being their comments. And in, if you go through those letters, most of what's in this ordinance is articulated in, in writing from them to us.
Right. In, second question. In including additional definitions of different types of housing, like manufactured, which I always considered, in my many years of, you know, in planning and design review board, you know, it's, it's what, what, you know, whatever fits best, you know, you apply. But do we, do we risk, so to speak, excluding other alternative types of, of construction that might be even better? Have any thought of that?
I don't think you risk excluding them. I mean, I think you'd need to, the definition's fairly. I mean, I think you'd need to, the definition's fairly broad as it is now. You could consider other types of factory-built home products. I don't know if you have a specific...
But it doesn't exclude, you're not, we don't think it's going to exclude consideration of alternatives, then?
No, I mean, I think if there's a viable alternative that comes forward to you, you could consider that at the time.
Right. And I haven't tried to go through to find the right wording. Okay, thank you. Onto parking. You know, there's comparison between Moraga and Arinda and Lafayette, and that we are more, we are, have higher demands than Lafayette and Arinda. Of course, they have public transit, but let's not go there. Do we have, have we achieved or gotten feedback from either of those communities as to how their more liberal allowances for parking work actually work? I know that downtown Lafayette can be very tough to find parking in, for example. Do we have any, any metrics that, comparisons that allow us to say, oh, okay, so we can go to one, to two, and, you know, closer to Lafayette and Arinda, since we're being, we're being compared with them?
We can ask the former Lafayette.
Well, yeah.
We didn't survey specifically, you know, we didn't communicate with the planners on that specific question.
And if I can add, it's interesting that you raise it now. They're actually in the process. They received a grant from MTC to study the downtown parking requirements. And there is a survey available to the public as we speak, and they're gathering information, gathering feedback from both the chamber and the downtown residents. So I think it's an important question, and it's one that they've been working on and with this MTC grant, hoping to get more data on it and get more insight.
So what is the purpose of the study? Do they think they need more? Do they think they need less?
To determine how much demand is really, how much demand there is out there, and also potentially to have a document that the city can rely on in the future if they get development projects before them.
But one side or the other brought up the issue to study, either the "we want more parking" or the "we want less parking," folks.
It was an MTC grant, they're, like the mayor mentioned, they do have a BART station. So with the expectations that higher density housing should go around transit-oriented communities, the question of how much parking do we need is out there. Where the city is also, I almost said "we." The city is also limited in terms of the half mile from BART, no parking can be required. So these are just important questions that have come up in that jurisdiction, and they are taking the time. And with MTC support, they're going to study it. They've done a lot of traffic counts. This survey is going to be important, but it'll be good to see what they come up with at the end. And I'm sorry, my voice is so weird.
Thank you. Okay. Onto density. I guess two things. AB 1287 provides density bonuses for rental units, but there's also for, not only low income, but middle income, their density bonuses now being offered by the state. Did they consider, or has it been considered that that could be counterproductive in that developers will be driven to do more mid-level housing and to the exclusion of low-income housing?
Yeah, it's a good point. And I mean, I think that's something that we're, that people in the planning field are talking about, too, is if rental housing is already in the moderate range, just based on the market, what's the incentive? We're, I mean, we're giving folks all this additional density for something that they could have built anyway, under, you know, because the market would already support that. So it's a valid point. I don't have the answer to whether the state took that into consideration. I think they're looking for anything that will incentivize or, you know, just the market.
However, it sounds like it's a hard ask, huh?
I think...
A very direct ask.
Yeah, and we will be coming back to the council later this year with amendments to the density bonus ordinance that incorporate these new state requirements.
And I may have missed it, but when I tried to cross-check the report with the proposed revised ordinances, or ordinance, I could not find any reference in the ordinance itself to density bonus. And I did a search on density, and nothing, nothing popped up.
It might be referenced by the code section instead of the words "density bonus." So, yeah, I would have to check on that.
Okay. But it's there. Whatever, recognizing that, actually, it's, we're sort of directing the reader maybe to a different code at the state level to see what the current requirement is. Okay. Let me just make sure. I'm trying to use my iPad now instead of paper. Yeah, that completes my questions. Thank you very much, Barry.
Thank you.
Are there other questions by councilmembers? If, I'd like to open this up now to public questions and comments. Are there any members of the public that would like to come up to the podium and ask questions or make comments? I'm seeing none. So let's, Barry, do you have anything further you want to communicate?
Not at this time, thank you.
Members of the town council deliberations, we're being asked here to make amendments to our housing element, the ordinance. And what do you think? Lisa?
You want to start or go down? Just say that, first of all, Barry, thank you for doing, I commend you for doing this work, all the cross-referencing and checking. Your work doesn't go unnoticed. But it really seems to me, the bottom line on most, on most of these, looking at all of the findings, most of these have to do with, as Barry put, asks from HCD. I don't think that we have a lot of choice in almost all of these items. So there are some that I might question, some that I don't think would apply to Moraga. Nonetheless, we still have to put those in. Whether or not some of those might affect us in the future, I don't know. But again, our hands are a little bit tied here, and we're doing the work we're supposed to do. Nothing more specific.
Thank you. Graham?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Barry. Always good to see you here and get the high level of detail. I find it, as someone who's worked for co-living developers and operators in other municipalities to advance the adoption into their specific zoning codes in San Francisco, LA, Oakland, and San Jose, I think, is where I've done co-living projects. Really interesting to see you bring that up in light of the community that we have here and speak to its being perhaps highly applicable to student housing and senior housing. So just raising that for something I'd love to see us further explore in a community where it could very well be highly applicable to those resident types. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Really nice job, a lot of detail. Virtually every single one of these things was sort of already described in the policy framework. We should have anticipated that they were coming. There either state law, there's pressure to not certify if we didn't be responsive to HCD, and then there's a few other little odds and ends. The only one I have any nervousness about is maybe reducing the guest parking at the multifamily, but I can live with that for the time being. And thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. Carrie?
I just wanted to thank staff for doing a great job. Thank you, Barry. Excellent work, as always. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you all is basically all I was saying. And I'm happy to make a motion when the time is right for that.
Thank you. Actually, Barry, can I ask one more question? I apologize. So the revised requirement for accommodating, making accommodations for ADA...
Right, reasonable accommodation.
Yeah, reasonable accommodations. And now we're removing the question or the criteria of impacting other uses, right?
Impacting surrounding uses, yeah.
Exactly. But what about if that, that reasonable accommodation, in fact, creates a safety hazard for the neighbor?
I think you can find in the other criteria that if there's a safety hazard, you can still address that in the findings. Because the other criteria still talk about the physical aspects of the property. So it's still, it's still doable.
What if, for example, that ramp that you put in actually blocks the entrance to your neighbor's home, and his alternative is to go out the back door? Is that going to work?
I would say that's a physical attribute of the property that you're impacting in that case. I think it's more if you're, I'm just trying to think of an example of one that would be completely subjective. I mean, that's not, that wouldn't be that subjective if you're blocking access to somebody's door versus they don't like the appearance because it changes the character of the neighborhood. That's more of what they're after.
Okay, but I didn't, I didn't see that, that, you know, relief given there. Were you going to?
I was just going to chime in with a potential example of a subjective, subjective standard in that, you know, you're asking if it's going to impact another use of the property or your neighbor's use of the property. And the aesthetic comes up quite a bit with the ramps. And I actually had a couple neighbors object to ramps that somebody was requesting as a reasonable accommodation to their property. And it, it creates actually a lot more controversy to something that I think is pretty, should be pretty standard for somebody who's, needs accommodations. But, so, you know, and I think as a general matter, having more objective standards is better when you're addressing these types of issues. It allows for more efficient processing of the application.
Yeah. So it may be theoretical because we've sort of been told this is the way it's going to be.
Yeah, I think you would find that the same finding that Moraga has was in other ordinances as well, and they're all coming out throughout, across the state.
Right. My comments are significant concern because we're, you know, we're, we probably every five years or 10 years should, should by edict reduce our municipal code by 30%, just to simplify it. And, and, you know, we're adding more complexities here again, and, you know, just philosophically, I don't like that. But again, we're not being given much choice in that, and it's, you know, it's kind of one size fits all, so we have to go with it. You know, I'm not sure that Arinda and Lafayette are good analogues for us with regard to requiring parking, but I don't have anything better. You know, I asked the question as rhetorical, you know, how are we going to know when the state, as, you know, the state requires changes are grossly overreached? And, you know, again, we're not allowed to ask that. That's it. So having whined, I'm okay with moving this forward. Carrie, if you would like to, if it's okay with the other town council members, if you'd like to make a motion, please do so.
I move that we waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance amending Title VIII of the Moraga Municipal Code. The proposed ordinance implements various provisions of the 2023 to 2031 Moraga housing Do I need to read all of that? Or just say as?
As recommended by staff.
As written.
Yeah. That's good.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Carrie Hillis, and seconded by Councilmember Brian Dolan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's moves, okay, roll call.
Sure.
We're going to do roll call vote. Brian?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Still moves, is still approved unanimously. Okay, good. Thank you very much. It is 7:15. We started at 5:30. Does anyone need a break? I'm, I don't, not myself, move on. We have yet department reports, two items under department reports, and then just a few, few things. I'm not seeing anyone ask for a break, so let's move on to item nine. It says be in the, Barry, thank you very much. Establish town council fire services committee and appoint two committee members. Is there a report here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll do a brief report for you. But before I do that, I would like to convey apologies for Dick Olson. He wanted to be here for this item, to make some comments and convey his support. And I'm mentioning that because if it weren't for him, this wouldn't be on the agenda. So I just think it's commendable what he did by bringing this issue to the town's attention. And if he's watching, I just want to convey appreciation. I know the council feels the same way. But it's proof that every resident matters, and if something doesn't seem right, a resident should not hesitate to point it out. Case in point. Okay. So at the May 14th council meeting, you authorized the establishment of a joint committee consisting of two members of the council, and if MOFD concurs, two members from MOFD. And the purpose would be to replicate pretty much the structure of the joint city MOFD fire committee that is used in Arinda. Now, their title in Arinda is for fire prevention. We're suggesting, and that's just their title, doesn't mean that's the only thing they talk about, but in talking with Dick Olson, to be more comprehensive and flexible for the council, we're suggesting that the title here be the Fire Services Committee. That gives you the ability to talk about an array of services, including fire prevention, fire suppression, emergency medical services, emergency preparedness, evacuations, home hardening, evacuation plans, and related topics. So if the MOFD board of directors, if they concur with this, so if you make your decision tonight who the two reps should be, then I'll reach out to the fire chief, and he'll schedule a meeting for his board, and then they'll determine if they want to do this, and then what two members from that body would be partner with this body. Probably be the two that represent Moraga, I would imagine. The actual meeting location dates, time, and all that has to be worked out. So we'll be flexible. Maybe they'll come here, maybe we'll go over to Arinda, but whatever is agreeable. So at this time, you have to decide which two of you should it be. At the meeting on May 14th, there was a reference made to the mayor and vice mayor by, by way of reminding you, you have two members, Graham and Brian, that are on the liaison committee. So with that, I'm, I'll turn it back to the council. You'll decide what two it should be, and then direct staff, and we'll go set this up.
Are there any questions for the town manager? Carrie? Or, no, you first, please.
I have a question for the town manager. Can you tell me how this committee would be different and/or work with a liaison? How would that work?
This would just be more structured, more formal, with set meeting dates. In the past, as I understand, the liaison, two liaisons, it was really informal, and they would keep an eye on things and as necessary, report to the council. I've been here two and a half years. It wasn't really structured, but they were in place. So this will be more structured. Oh, by the way, staff will be at the... Oh, by the way, staff will be at these meetings and at least for the first few years or so, or the first few meetings, it'll definitely be me, and then we'll see how it goes.
So would this be in place of liaison?
That's for you to decide.
Okay.
Can I augment that? Since I've, I've been the, one of the reps or liaisons with MOFD for the past five plus years. Very different. Liaisons, as, as the town manager said, are, are to, to keep tabs. You can at times communicate both with the fire chief, but also members of the Board of Directors. If it, if it makes sense, attend meetings, monitor. Keeping in mind, a lot of their meetings focus on actually labor issues, and so they're closed. This two by two, or we're gonna call it a fire council, Fire Services Council Committee, at least as Arinda practices it, it's a, it is a agendized meeting. So it's for the public, so I think we would want to conduct it in Maraga. And the two town council members with the two MOFD members would run the, run the meeting. And to some degree, now you're interfacing with, engaging, doing stakeholder engagement. I would hope that also would be broadcast.
Is there, there's no reason for it to be a public me, I mean, there's, there's no requirement that it's public. That seems odd to me.
It's.
Two and two.
So it's not technically an ad hoc committee because it's comprised of other people besides the two council members. So it has to be a standing committee. It's also a standing committee.
It's permanent.
Permanent.
Also, I, I think the intent is to give the residents the opportunity to come and communicate on these issues locally to their electeds. As well as. Okay. Other questions? I'm sorry, Carrie.
It's okay. So question that I have, and Steve kind of got at it, I'm sorry, the, the mayor kind of got at it with his comments too, which is that, so the, the issue with the staffing for our ambulance service came up primarily, buried in, in documents, largely discussed in closed session. So my question, my first question for staff is, I think it's imperative that we do this committee, but would we be able to be, to gain information from MOFD for something so striking as the hacking back dramatically of fire service hours or ambulance service hours? Since that's in closed session, I don't know how much information we'd actually be entitled to.
I respond. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I understand the concern, but look, at the end of the day, your staff, the town manager, I'm gonna drop, uh, drop the ball here. So you can say, no, that's not true. Well, it is true. Part of the responsibility of this office is to make sure we stay abreast of what's going on with other local governments that impact Maraga. Having this structured though is another safety net and another tool, another vehicle to ensure that this type of thing doesn't happen again. I, I don't think it's fair to be negative or say disparaging things about MOFD because I don't think it was their intent to be sneaky or non-transparent. That board was trying to balance the budget and do some policy things, and that, that was their prerogative. They did it in a legally correct way. I do concur with you, Mr. Vice Mayor, that they weren't as open about it. I don't think it was deliberate. And it did come up in closed session discussions and labor, on labor and that type of thing. But there was a public meeting back in November of 2022 when this was part of the discussion. But I will tell you, in being as transparent as I may be, my counterpart over there, and he was a stellar fire chief, one of the best I've ever worked with, just did not make me aware. Just as the two members that, on their board that represent Maraga didn't make any of the five of you aware. I don't think it was deliberate. So we have an obligation to keep an eye on what goes on over there. And the two by two format here will ensure that, that that happens.
And then my second question is, who has control over setting the agenda? Would it be Maraga? Would it be MOFD? Or would it be a combination of the two?
It would be neither. It's the board. The, the board works with, so I'm not 100% sure how they do it there, but it would be with their board chair and the fire chief. They probably work on the agenda together, and then it, it appears, and the, the board has its meetings, just like you do.
I would.
Oh, for the ad hoc, I'm sorry.
For the ad hoc.
Ad hoc committee.
I, I'm so sorry. That would be the members, the two council members and the two board members, and the fire chief and the town manager would work together.
And that's the key, I think, because there's a lot of things that.
I'm sorry for the.
We're part timers, so having staff actually have an eye, and Maraga's staff having an eye.
That's correct.
Because as I've heard from some of the board members, they really view the district as a whole. We're obligated with view, with viewing Maraga.
That, that, that's correct. And so the fire chief and myself, we would be constantly talking. And then I get my cues and direction from the council as he does from the board. And then we make sure that the items are on there.
Steve.
Are there more questions?
I, I thought we already decided that we were going to do this, and the only thing before us tonight is who's doing it.
That, that's correct. Yes.
My question goes to that. I'm curious if we know how Arinda does it, Arinda does it? Is it their mayor and vice mayor, or is it, do you know?
I can answer. Let me answer that. If, when we get to comments, I'll answer that. Okay. If, no more questions, let's go to deliberations on this. And two things I want to state. Again, having that experience with being the liaison and perhaps being the more active liaison, because I was the primary liaison. But still, it was really transactional. You know, you, you look at the agenda, and if, unless there's something on the agenda that is really pertinent, and you have no, you know, you have no sway over what puts on that agenda, gets put on the agenda, that, that is, is, you're more monitoring, okay? Now, maybe other liaisons would become more involved, but generally there isn't that opportunity because you don't know who, who you really need to, to talk with. Other than you've got three representatives for, for Maraga on the board. With regard to the question of how Arinda does it, just, again, covering at least partially what, what communicated at their last meeting, they generally meet on a quarterly basis. And I misspoke at the last meeting when I said it was the mayor and vice mayor. In fact, it's the mayor and past mayor. And the only reason it's the mayor and past mayor is that they're the ones that are interested in the subject. And I don't know how they handle the liaison piece of it. Because they also interface with MOFD because of, they, they have this sales tax that, that also they have to interface with MOFD on. And, you know, I also report, and, and I apologize to Carrie because I haven't spoken with Carrie about assigning, you know, which members of the town council, because I talked with Brian about it, and, and thusly I'm not gonna violate the Brown Act. Upon further consideration post our, our last meeting, I, I feel that there absolutely is a nexus between this responsibility and, and being the liaison with MOFD, that, that it's complimentary. And so I, 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 at least I lobby for making it a, a duty of the, the, the two liaisons between the, the council and MOFD. And, and I, I'd like to hear from personally and, and others too, I suspect, how you, you two feel about that, and also Carrie at this point.
You want me to go? So Steve and I did talk about it, and the way I look at it is, it, it seemed to make some logic to have the liaisons do it. And since I am one of the liaisons, I'm willing to do it. When the mayor and the vice mayor sort of stepped up and said, we think we should fulfill the role, I didn't have any objection to that either. So I'm, I'm kind of open. I'm willing to do it. I can see it as an extension of the, of the responsibility. If it's not us liaisons, I think there's a little duplication of effort. And that's annoying to me, but.
We don't want to annoy.
So I'm, I'm very flexible on the topic.
Thank you. Thank you. Graham?
Yeah, I agree with your comments, Brian. I think I appreciated the mayor and vice mayor making that statement. I think that was helpful in just demonstrating how significant our concerns were leading up to last week's board meeting. And I look forward to Brian and myself extending ourselves further into the role.
Lisa?
I agree. I, I don't think there really needs to be duplication of efforts. And everybody is busy here. And in addition to the duplication, there may be some confusion or some, some things that are not passed along. One person or one of the liaisons thought that the committee member might have known something or did know something. So I think it's cleaner that way. And that's a better way to go.
And thank you for those who are willing to step up to the extra efforts, the two of you.
Carrie?
Yeah, I definitely agree on the duplication of effort. I would say that with the establishing of, of the committee, we would eliminate, or I would propose that we eliminate the liaison function. And that function would be provided by the members of the committee. So I do believe there is a role for town leadership to be on the committee. I'm agnostic on the vice mayor piece. I do believe that the mayor has a role being on the committee, especially as the, the head of the council. I could be open, I think, to a structure where our existing liaisons for this year continue on in that function. And potentially next year, we mimic the Arinda posture of having the, the mayor and the previous year's mayor in Maraga as the assignment. The, that structure is somewhat unique from, from what I know of for committee assignments. What we do for audit and budget committee is, it's a leadership assigned committee typically and historically where it's mayor and vice mayor. So I'm open to the structure, but I definitely think, in my opinion, at minimum, on the second year of this, that there should be a role for the mayor and potentially the previous year mayor, or potentially the mayor and vice mayor, depending on what my colleagues think about this. But I'm open to the liaisons for this year.
Would you be open to going forward with basically redefining the liaison roles for, redefining the liaison roles and including with those liaison roles being our representatives on this fire services committee?
Absolutely.
And then next year, it can be revisited?
Yes.
See how it goes?
Because I do.
You're okay with that?
I am. I, because I do agree there are.
Judge, but let's.
I think that as long as the, as the, the folks that have the assignment understand that it's not just a quarterly meeting, that it, because it still basically would be to duplicate the liaison role up until there's the quarterly meeting. Because who knows? Again, I, it's those, the saying goes, fool me once, and we don't want to, to have a replication of that.
Fair enough. And I, I think depending upon when they schedule the, the meetings, if it's right after an MOFD meeting, maybe they don't have to monitor the F, MOFD meeting. But I, regardless, I think they'll have to monitor the, the board meetings. Okay, so is there a motion? Oh, yes.
Public comment.
Comment. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public I, that want to comment on this? I see none. So now I will move that we move forward on establishing a town council fire services committee as presented by staff tonight, and appoint two committee members being the current town council liaisons, two MOFD, and leave it at that, no names.
And we'll, we'll conclude the liaison function. That, that's over.
I think we.
No, that's not on the agenda tonight.
Oh.
We just incorporate the two together. You can call it liaison, you can call it.
And then we can reassess next year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Okay. 9C. This is the fiscal year 2025-26, Street Lighting Assessment District 1971, 9 dash 1. Engineers Report Resolution Declaring the Town Intention to Levy and Collect Assessments and Set a Public Hearing for June 25th, 2025. Is there a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, this is Sean Knapp, your Public Works Director and town engineer. I'm on the clock appears. I don't know if I take my notes and do it and have to make it faster here. But I have a couple hi, I have a couple highlights for you to consider tonight, you know, and I'll go through them rather rapidly. And just some highlights, you know, the district was formed in 1979. The district assessment is currently at $58 per single fam, um, family home. That's been there since fiscal year 20, 2010. Annually, you go through a process, a three-step process. We are on the second step of that process tonight to request a resolution approving the district engineer's report and declaring the intention to levy and collect district assessments, which will be done at a future public hearing date, which is tentatively scheduled for June 25th, where you will again approve the engineer's report and the levy of district assessments. The staff is proposing to continue to levy at $58 per single phone, single, uh, home with an estimated budget slightly increased over last year's budget of $286 and four, uh, 400, $286, 400. There is a small shortfall between revenues, which is about $250, $250,000, which is approximately $36,000. But we have a significant reserve which we keep in balance for any, uh, any maintenance that needs to be done. And also because the assessments come in at a certain point in the year, and we have ongoing yearly expenditures, so we have to keep a running balance. So that will cover the shortfall. The district can consider raising the fees. We have a stipulation there that currently is we could go up to $90 per single household without a special ballot to be done because we have an escalator which we haven't applied since we started with the $58 for the single homes. So again, it's up to the council to consider approving the district engineer's report, and then declaring the intention to levy and collect district assessments, which will be done at a future public hearing, which is currently set at June 25th, which we will advertise according to standards for a public hearing. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Questions for our town engineer, manager, chief?
Bottle washer?
Yeah.
Bottle washer.
I, I have some questions. And I've been, Sean, I've been through this several times. And I, I still have challenges understanding Maraga's, what appears to me to be not terribly logical street lighting approach. And so we have 4,200 parcels within the town that pay an annual assessment for the maintenance operation, traffic signals, and approximately 1,000 streetlights. So do all 4,200 parcels benefit? 1,000 streetlights. So do all 4,200 parcels benefit from the streetlights being near their homes? Do we know that?
Are you asking the all that are, the two-thirds of the parcels that are paying into the, yes, they have, they have a benefit. They have streetlights that are either on their streets, or they get a public benefit for streetlights and other, and traffic signals throughout the town.
Okay. And the other one-third of the town that does not pay into this, is that then a mixture of private streetlights and no streetlights that cover them?
Generally, we consider on public streets that they do not have a lighting, you know, lighting district assessment, because they do not have lights to be charged against. It's they have to by ballot initiate the request to be in the positive ballots, you know, majority ballots to be in the district. We do not have certain, you know, neighborhoods that are not in the districts, and they do not have the benefit, and they do not have the streetlights in those areas. We do manage for the Maraga Country Club, private, and they pay through their property tax, private streetlights. They're actually PGA lights, but we pay the bills and PGA maintains them, just like it was a public street. But again, we collect the property tax for that.
And there's some areas in Maraga, such as Sanders Ranch, which appear to be, most of the streets are covered, but some streets like Merrill Circle are not. So they made the cognizant decision at Merrill Circle, I guess, that they didn't want streetlights out there.
In that instance, I don't know the history, but I could, I could find it out for you. But they have to, as, as property owners, positively vote to be included in the district.
That's semi-
The majority, yeah.
Right. Semi-rural.
Flashlight.
As opposed to the urban part. And it looks like most of Ream and most of, a good portion of Maraga Road are not covered by the street lighting district. Is that correct what the map shows?
Yes. So why the district is fairly old, is not as old as the town, is not as, is not as old as the existence of the roadway system before incorporation. So you have areas that have not voted to become included, and they don't have streetlights as such. And so that, that is why they're outside of the district.
Maybe I, what I see at night are the streetlights from the, from the shopping center that light up pieces of that. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you very much for your tolerance. Once again, I probably ask these questions every year. Well, I sometimes ask, you know, streetlights on telephone poles versus streetlights on, on individual poles. Large variation. Okay. No questions? How about anything from the audience? No? No public comment? Bring it back for deliberation. Any, any comments by council members? You all, you all good? Oh, go ahead.
So we'll just flag again that the town has, as one of our priorities, to investigate additional fee structures. There is a public benefit to the one-third of parcels that are not in the district. They are receiving a benefit from those that are in the lighting that is provided, and they are also not getting lighting, if that's their decision, that they want that to take place. In addition to that, we are also leaving potential revenue on the table that can be utilized for beautification of our, of our main thoroughfares. So as we move forward on this item, I'm just flagging again, as I do every year, that this is an item that I'm hoping soon, especially given that we have a general election coming up next year, that we may be prepared to move forward on in '26. Thank you.
How would we do that?
It's on the work list.
It's on the work list?
We would have it in front of count. We'll have a staff report at some point explaining the process, and, and we will seek direction and clarification, what you want to do. And if you want to pursue it, then it would go to the voters.
Would it be just for those areas that are not currently covered, or would it go out to the whole town?
We have to work our way through that. Street lighting might be part of it, but the main driver would be landscaping along Maraga Way, Maraga Road, Ream, and other areas.
So this is more comprehensive, then?
Correct. You have directed staff to look at a variety of things in terms of becoming self-sufficient and more independent, and being able to deal with some of the blight and rundown and deteriorated portions of the community. And there are mechanisms that can be pursued. So we have to do the analysis and put it out there. If a decision is ultimately made to go to the voters, then some thought will have to be put or provided in terms of how will the educational campaign take place, and who would talk on behalf of that and that type of thing. So if it's done right, I, I believe the residents of this community would be very supportive once they understood what it is, how much it costs, and how, who would benefit.
Right. Thank you. It moves us on to council member requests for future agenda.
Do we have to move on that item?
We need to, we need to adopt the resolution approving the assessment district, District Engineer's Report for fiscal year 25-26.
I move to do what the town attorney
And declaring the town of Maraga's intention to levy and collect the district assessments for fiscal year 25-26, and setting a public hearing date for June 25, 2025, to receive public input on the district and proposed assessment, which is not proposed to increase from the previous year.
I accept that additional language into my motion.
I will second that motion.
It has been moved by council member Carrie Hillis and seconded by Lisa Maggio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moves unanimously. Or gets approved unanimously. Okay. Council member requests for future agenda items. Are there any? Carrie?
Per the discussion from earlier in this meeting, I request the council set for discussion at a future meeting whether we should ask staff to explore the issue of funding 16 additional library, library hours, as is done by our neighboring communities of Danville, Arinda, and Lafayette.
Huh.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let's have the discussion. Town manager, follow-up and announcements. Once you complete your notes.
So for a, for a future meeting, you say Staff will gladly follow and bring that back. Okay. Town manager.
Scott, you back?
Microphone. I was throwing a curveball there. Had to digest that. Okay. All right. I don't have any other additional follow-up from tonight. But I will tell you upcoming items. So the next council meeting is on June 11. Before we get to that, though, I do want to let the council know that Senator Tim Grayson, he's going to be holding a workshop of sorts, a roundtable on Friday, the 30th. And it will include representatives from Maraga, Arinda, Lafayette, Danville County, and portions of Berkeley and Oakland. So the mayor, so from Maraga, it'll be Mayor Woolkey, myself, and our police chief's not available, so our lieutenant will be there with us. And then Jeff Isaacs, the fire chief from MOFD, will be there. And then our counterparts from Arinda, Lafayette, and the other places I mentioned will be there. So what it really is, it's a roundtable for a couple hours. It's a talk about fire exposure, fire preparation, mitigation, and different measures for the communities that are in the high fire risk area. So the senators wanted to do this for a while, so we will be there. It's more of a learning or listening exercise. And I'm sure that we would, the mayor and/or myself will report out at the next meeting what the outcome of that is.
I have a question of legal. Can I ask my fellow Town Council members? I think I can, but I want to confirm it, that if they have input for this Friday meeting, which I think is kind of a, of a very high level, you know, are there really opportunities that we need to try to pursue? And I've got, my favorite one is stakeholder engagement. But if you guys have anything that you want to have surfaced on Friday, I'm, I'm interested in receiving that. One-way communication.
In writing or now?
Preferably by email. That's, that's acceptable, correct?
It'd be, I'd recommend that it be sent to the town manager. The town manager can put them together in, in a package.
Please submit it to the town manager, and, and he'll share it with me.
Yeah. I, yeah. It is a roundtable exercise.
It's got to be tomorrow.
Yeah.
It's, it's Friday at, at noon. So, yeah, tomorrow, please.
Yeah, as I understand this, it's more about mitigation measures, roundtable exercise for the participants. I'm not so sure it's about providing input to the senator, but we'll see.
It's open-ended.
Yeah. Okay.
It's, it's, I'm not going to say it's loosey-goosey, but it's, it's
Loosey-goosey.
And, and my interpretation of it is, you know, are there high-level opportunities that we need to start thinking about? Anyway, that may be different.
The next council meeting will be on June 11. And as mentioned, we, we will have the Pride Month proclamation, a variety of agenda items. We still have, we have some budget items that are coming up, part of the budget process, the financial budget process, including the adoption of the master fee schedule, and then the 2025 legislative platform. We'll finally get to that. And a potential lobbyist contract that we talked about on May 7 with the Tri-Cities meeting. And then I'm going to, staff will come back with the Bollinger Valley evacuation route discussion that council asked for.
And at some point, are we going to, we'll have a special session on contract approvals?
Labor, yeah. Yeah, that, the negotiations are going, ongoing. And then that, when we get to that point, we'll be in front of council with that.
Right.
The three contracts.
But that won't be on a regular meeting. That'll be a special meeting, right?
That'll be an
Well, you'll let us know.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be an upcoming meeting. Yeah. We're making progress.
Good. Anything else, Scott?
No, thank you.
So I would like to adjourn this meeting in memorandum of retired county supervisor Federal Glover. And I have something here to read. Maybe we could each read a paragraph as sort of a, what we normally do if we pass it to Brian. I have one copy of it. I'm sorry. But you just work your way down.
Okay. Federal Glover, born on May 9, 1956, in Pittsburgh, California, is the son of Morrison Lucille Glover, who moved out west to pursue job growth and opportunity. Growing up as one of 12 siblings, Federal graduated from Pittsburgh High School in 1975, where he was student body president and homecoming king, later graduating from San Francisco State University with a degree in business administration.
Before entering politics, Glover spent 22 years in the private sector, where he held various management roles. His political career began when he was elected to the Pittsburgh City Council in 1996, and served as mayor in 1998 through 1999. During his tenure, Glover oversaw significant projects, including the construction of a new city hall. Glover initiated neighborhood policing in collaboration with the police department, and established relationships with local schools, leading to the creation of his first truancy ordinance in Pittsburgh, of the first truancy ordinance in Pittsburgh. Glover also launched the Youth Summit in 1997, a program focused on developing self-esteem and life skills among students.
Thank you. After leaving the city council in 2000, Federal Glover became the first African American to be elected to the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors, where he served for 24 years. As county supervisor, Glover led various initiatives, such as the Gang Task Force, the Industrial Training Institute for Job Training, and the AIDS HIV Task Force to promote awareness and prevention. He also consolidated rural fire districts for better local control, and initiated youth conferences to engage young people in community issues.
Supervisor Glover served on various other boards, from his longstanding role on the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, to his involvement with Trans Plan and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which advocates for effective transportation solutions in the region. Through these memberships, Glover played a key role in significant transportation projects.
Our thoughts are with Federal's family and close friends. He was a dedicated public servant who changed the landscape of the region in which he served. This evening, the town of Maraga's Town Council adjourns in remembrance of an impactful leader and inspirational human, Federal Glover.
You know, I don't know if others have supplemental comments about Federal. I spoke with him maybe only once or twice, but, and he attended several of the Contra Costa County Mayor's conferences that I attended. And he always had a crowd of people around him. And it was obvious that he was well-liked, and, and per the biography there, you know, very impactful. And so I, it's this big surprise to me, because he very recently was still a supervisor, county supervisor, and this is pretty sudden. I think it's a loss. Yeah.
I have a request that we print up a version of that document on ceremonial paper and have it submitted to the family. I just think it's a good, I doubt they're watching this meeting, and it would just be good for us to also share our condolences that way.
I'm just impressed he was homecoming king.
Scott, is that a reasonable request?
Under, under his signature, potentially.
Under mayor's signature. Adding to his to-do list.
Yeah.
Whatever I can do to assist that, Scott. Yeah, I'll handle the mailing piece of it for you. We are now adjourned.
Awesome.
Good meeting. Thank you all.